Good evening. I will call the meeting to order. Councilman Scott Barr will offer a prayer for us to start the meeting.
Laurie, even as we come to you tonight, appreciating the freedoms we have in this country and in this city, and even the chance that we have for self-government here tonight, we are haunted by the horrific images coming out of the Ukraine. We just pray for everyone over there. We know you as the source of peace and all that is good and true and beautiful. We just pray that you could intercede there. We know we don't always fully understand your will, and yet we know your will is good. Pray that you give the people their courage, and even as we pray for these things, we ask for the courage here to be good stewards of the freedoms that we have. Please give us wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of our city tonight. I pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Tonight's meeting will be the 1,942nd regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. The meeting minutes from tonight will be approved on April 18th of 2022. Ms. Nash is with us tonight. Ms. Nash, will you take the role, please?
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Donavick.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Vice President Toy.
Here.
President Jolly.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Nash. At this time, I will seek a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 23rd. That's the 1,941st regular meeting.
Move approval.
Support McIntyre.
Motion by Barr, second by McIntyre. Anybody on the council have any comments on those meeting minutes? Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, will you take the role on that?
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The meeting minutes pass. At this time, we will move to audience communication. Audience communication at this time is limited to items that are not on the agenda this evening. Each member of the audience has three minutes to address the council in regards to any items that are not on the agenda this evening. We ask you to keep your remarks polite and cordial as best as you can, and I will note for the audience at this time that council will not be responding to any audience communications during this audience communication period. The council has set aside 30 minutes for the audience to speak, and we do not want to infringe upon that. If the council has any comments in regards or reflections they want to share after hearing the audience communication, they will do so in council communication. With that being said, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brent Sabo. I live at 14587 Blue Sky Street. Before I get started this evening, I'd like to request an additional minute and 30 seconds to speak.
We'll entertain that. We'll entertain that after the three minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer a motion to approve a minute and 30 seconds additional time for the resident to talk.
All right. Anybody from the council?
Support.
Okay. Audience communication in regards to that. Ms. Nash, will you take the role?
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. You have four and a half minutes. Ms. McIntyre will keep the time. Go ahead.
This evening, I'll be reading aloud a letter that I've wrote to the mayor and members of city council. Dear Mayor Brosnan and members of Livonia City Council, I am writing this letter to follow up on a letter I wrote to you back on September 20th, 2021. In that letter, I expressed my disappointment in the city's road repair program causing the destruction of healthy, mature right-of-way trees. I asked what changes were being made to the road repair plan with respect to right-of-way tree preservation. I read this letter as public comment during the regular city council meeting on September 20th, 2021, and city council recommended the issue to the Committee of the Whole. Now we are over half a year later, and my questions have not been answered, and the Committee of the Whole meeting has not occurred. We should not be cutting down right-of-way trees, which are an asset to our community in order to repair road surfaces. This problem is unsettled, and it is very important to me that we find a resolution. Trees consume carbon dioxide and create oxygen, cleaning the air we all breathe. Trees provide shade for our homes and reduce energy costs. Trees are homes for wildlife. Trees absorb stormwater runoff and alleviate flooding. Trees reduce noise by absorbing and deflecting sound. Trees are aesthetically pleasing and support mental health. Trees increase property value, in turn generating more tax revenue for a city, and trees are an effective tool in the fight against climate change. As an established community, Livonia is privileged to have an abundant mature tree population. With much of the tree population on city right-of-way property, Livonia's residents depend on city officials to responsibly manage the trees around their homes. In 2021 alone, over 100 healthy, mature, right-of-way trees were eliminated by the road repair program. The road repair program's tree problem was brought to your attention in 2021, and this was not the first time residents have sounded the alarm. The problem has been spotlighted year after year. It's time for change. I will ask again, what changes are being made to the road repair program to prioritize preservation of existing right-of-way trees? To the Livonia City Council, the contracts for the 2022 road repairs will be coming before you in the next months. I urge you to carefully consider what, if any, changes have been made since previous years' contracts, which allowed such heavy-handed treatment of Livonia's coveted trees. The road repair program is funded by the Road Millage, which increases the mill rate for every Livonia property owner. In August, Livonia voters will be deciding whether to renew this millage for yet another 10 years. How can Livonia residents be assured that they will not be contributing to the city's destruction of healthy, mature trees if they vote yes? Livonia's website boasts the number of right-of-way trees which have been planted by the Road Millage funds. For the sake of transparency, will residents also be informed that the Road Millage has reduced the city's right-of-way tree population and resulting shade canopy in the neighborhoods? Travel down the streets in any Livonia neighborhood that's been repaired in the past 20 years, and you will quickly notice the many vacant right-of-way lawns. In conclusion, the city of Livonia has a problem with its road repair program and right-of-way trees. Livonia residents have brought the same concerns to the mayor's office and city council on several occasions and continue to be dismissed. The message is clear. Livonia residents are interested in a more sustainable road repair solution. As we approach the August Road Millage renewal vote, residents need more than ever to know how the city is planning to proceed with road repairs. Will existing trees be preserved or continue to be eliminated en masse? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else for audience communication? Your name and address, sir?
Hi, James Crowley, 16106 Blue Skies Drive, and I also own homes in Castle Gardens. I have three homes there, and also my mother's home. And, you know, it's just really disappointing. I've worked with, on this tree committee along with Brent as well, spent hours and hours. You know, we're all very busy people too, with careers, families, and things going on. And, you know, it's disappointing that we put hours into something that really has been what we feel is dismissed. Well over a dozen calls to the mayor's office. I finally got one call back last May after making, you know, several calls, and I was out at a funeral. I called back within a half hour and still no return phone call. And I'm told that, yes, phone calls are returned. But I feel dismissed. And I think that driving down the streets after the repair, especially among Blue Skies where Brent and I, my mother lives, I grew up, and Brent lives, it's just shocking to see you have these huge trees on one side and then just vacant. It's just, it's really ruined the canopy. So, engineering, sure, fine, that's great, but what about the aesthetic? So, I just don't want to be dismissed. I think we need to address this. We're over a year later. We still have not had the Committee of the Whole. I still have not had an appointment with, I've been able to get in to see the mayor. Where are we going with this? What are we doing? Because I'm attending the tree committee meetings monthly. We haven't gone anywhere. So, I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that we really have not forgot about this, and we do want to continue to move forward, but we do want to see some results. I will say also that many residents, after the trees were removed, they maybe felt indifferent, and many have told me, wow, we didn't understand, you know, the impact that this would have when these trees are gone. So, I'd like you all to drive down Blue Skies and see how it looks now, because you all saw it before. I think many of you drove by. So, that's really all I have to say here. Thank you for your time, and hopefully we'll make some headway in the future.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for audience communication? There appears to be none. We will close audience communication. At this time, I will go to the council for any comments or special recognitions. We'll go to Ms. McIntyre first to share the retirees from the city.
We missed February retirement, so we'd like to congratulate Monica Pollard, who worked at the 16th District Court for 39 years and retired on the 26th of February of this year. We wish her a very, very happy and healthy retirement, and we thank her for her many years of service at the court.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council with any comments? At this time, there are none. I will note for the record that there are two public hearings on Monday, April 11th. And with that being said, we will move on to the agenda. This evening's agenda begins with a consent agenda. That is items one through six. These items were previously studied at the study meeting on, I believe, March 23rd. They were found to be non-controversial in nature and requiring no further study. Counsel, do you have any motions for the consent agenda?
I'll offer.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll support.
I'll offer a privy.
I'll support.
McCullough offers the motion. Donavick offers the support. Any council or audience communication on the consent agenda? There is none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that?
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The consent agenda, one through six passes. Moving on to item number seven, unfinished business. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance from the Department of Law, petition 2020-08-01-06, submitted by Middlebelt Plymouth Venture LLC to rezone parts of the properties at 29707 and 30273 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt and Milburn Avenue in the northwest quarter of Section 35 from C2 to general business, oh, excuse me, from C2 general business to NM2, which would be neighborhood multifamily. Counsel, any action on this?
Mr. President.
Mr. Barr.
I'll offer first reading on this.
Mr. Barr has offered a first reading. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? If you'd like to make a comment in regards to item number seven, please come to the podium. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address.
Merlin Smith, 30039 Richland. I got pictures, and I just wanted to get that submitted, and if that was okay to submit them for when I give my speech.
Yeah, I see the packet before me, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to make a speech at this time?
Oh, if you want me to go now.
Well, it's up to... I want you to do what you want to do.
I'm doing the whole audience for this proposal right now, then.
This is the time to address this issue, sir.
Okay. Is it two or three minutes?
You got two minutes, I believe. Since it's an agenda item, you got two minutes per hour.
Two minutes, okay. I'd like an additional, like, 45 seconds.
Let's go through the comments and then ask for time as it's needed, okay? That's what I would prefer as the person running the meeting. So, go ahead and use your time. If you expire and require additional, we'll go from there, okay?
Because I've timed it, and I'm like, just like, two sentences.
You're using your time now.
Oh, I didn't know it started. Thank you.
You're all set, sir.
Regarding the pictures I passed out, and also the video, which I'll send you in an email, I took of how the property is not safe for public, if rezoned residential. There is not one public sidewalk for the tenants to walk to Plymouth Road, to Walmart, or cross the way to Chili's, and all the way to Middlebelt. These pictures are proof that it's not safe for the public to even go there shopping. I am not against Vision 21 for our city. However, this does not fit the area proposed basely solely on public safety. However, it seems some of you feel rezoning this property with the goal of putting in apartments is a good idea. I would rather look at an empty field than an old Kmart building at Seven Mile Farmington. Part of Vision 21 is to get rid of blight, okay? Speaking of public, the people who put you in those seats you're sitting in, okay, they put you there to keep us safe. So, please continue to keep this public safe. I also emailed council and the mayor's pictures of the 15 years of growth of trees that were supposed to block noise and view from Walmart when that went in. The illustration shown of the proposal building for Orange Lawn Street, we would not be able to see anything. And I have a hard time believing that with the pictures that I took in real life.
Sir, let me stop you there for a second. Does anybody on the council have an objection to extending Mr. Smith's?
I will move to extend by a minute.
Support.
Okay, thank you. You be the judge with the proof of these pictures and the video that I'll send you later. Is this property rezoning for a proposed apartment building more important than public safety? Please remember that your Appointment Planning Commission recommended turning this rezoning down, proposal down, okay? If you care about the safety and welfare of the residents who voted you in, please turn this rezoning proposal down. And then I just have one question. How long does the mayor have to veto this?
14 days. 14 days or so.
Mr. President.
Yeah, I don't want... Counsel.
Mr. President, it's until the minutes of the next meeting.
Before the meeting minutes are approved, for the meeting where this is voted on, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'd rather not at this time.
I think there's clarification that's needed, Mr. President.
And I think the law department's just...
There would be no veto until the second reading and there is a vote. And then it would be up until the minutes of the following meeting.
Okay. So, there is no vote on this tonight. This is a first reading. So, there is absolutely no vote whatsoever to take place tonight. As I indicated in previous meetings, what would happen, what is the tradition of the Livonia City Council? Is that this will be held for the council to review any site plan that is submitted for that site, and the two would be voted on side by side. Two separate votes, but to happen concurrently after one another. Does that make sense? And then if the mayor vetoed it, she would veto it between the meeting minutes for that vote were approved at the next regular meeting.
Okay.
So, right now, there's no vote pending. There will be no vote on this tonight.
Okay. Now, the mayor does appoint the zoning, the planning commission, right? She's the one that does that, just for my recollection.
I think there is a, there's two separate boards here. There's a zoning board, and then there is a zoning, or excuse me, a planning commission. They're two separate things.
Okay.
The zoning commission is appointed by council up here. The zoning board of appeals, rather, is appointed by council. And then the planning commission is appointed solely by the mayor.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for this item to address? Sir, your name and address, please?
My name is Stephen Walden, 29912 Orange Lawn Street. I'd like to address the Vision 21 plan. The city planning commission, as he just indicated, they unanimously voted this whole project down. They are responsible to the master plan to verify and do studies and surveys about future growth and planned growth of this area. And I don't know if the commission has received those reports and how extensive they are, because this area is already congested, and you're talking about including more businesses, ramming it in, that do not fit the so-called many downtown structure that the Vision 21 is supposed to implement. Because frankly, Livonia is vastly overgrown from previous business. So, originally, there was a newspaper article in the papers indicating that this petition was originally fostered upon the council and the whole city by two council members that violated the city council rules and policies for having meetings with petitioners. They declared that there was an emergency when city council was out of session, and in that, these two members had some kind of connection with Showstack and the Middlebelt Plymouth Venture to allow this to occur. So, by default, they violated the ethics and rules of the commission. Those two members should not be allowed to vote on any aspects of this petition. Now, the other aspect is there was supposed to be some follow-up of Showstack having a meeting with the petitioners and the petitioners and residents of the people that are affected by this petition right behind where the apartment complex is to be built. Well, all of a sudden, and I believe it was part of Donavick's urging for the petitioner to meet, there was a dinner gathering. It was going to be at Mama Mia's. Well, only two members, two residents, were invited and showed up at this meeting. There were 48 others from the Clement Circle, which I believe is where Donavick resides, which is right across from Mama Mia's, and also more than a quarter mile away from this plant in vocation of this petition.
Sir, your time has exceeded...
Could I have more time?
I'd like to make a motion and give him additional time.
How much?
30 seconds, Mr. Chair.
Any objections from the council? You have 30 additional seconds, sir.
Okay, thank you. And based on that, that kind of aspects where other city council members have indicated their support for this petition, saying they'd rather see anything other than a retail business installed in there, where, again, the city planning commission shot this down unanimously, wholeheartedly, saying this does not fit the vision. So, we're looking at you members to decide if this is correct or not, to say, yes, this is a violation of what the planning commission is...
You're all set, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Come on up to the podium, sir. If you'd like to address this item, I would ask you to line up behind the podium so that we can go from one speaker to the next, as to use everybody's time accordingly. Your name and address, sir?
Hi, my name's Ted Swatlowski. I live at 30116 Richland. I can't believe that they would even consider rezoning this for residential when our roads can't handle the volume of traffic over the years from Menards, Home Depot, Myers, everything at Wonderland Mall. Then they approved Joy and Farmington. They're building there. West Chicago and Harrison, they're putting in. And how many more people is this going to put on the road in between the hours of four and six? You get off the expressway, and it takes 20 minutes to come from 96 down to Plymouth Road. And every time they put in a facility, it's putting another 700, 800 people on the road at that time of the day. So, I'd like them to take that into consideration. And then the amount of students that it might put into the Livonia schools as far as overloading the classrooms. So, take that into consideration, too. It's pretty much, you know, reconsider it all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
My name is Jeannie Sullivan. I live at 29944 Orange Lawn. I have a couple of things I'd want to mention that happened at the last couple of meetings. I think our big problem right now is a really serious trust issue, because it seems like trust is the one thing that we can't openly give right now, because we heard the last time, oh, you won't hear the trucks because we got the berm and we got the trees, and we're going to maintain it with two rows of trees and the grass and the sprinklers and the sidewalk, and none of that has happened. So, they said there was no public interest as it was just mentioned about the Mama Mia's. All of our addresses are common knowledge. They know our street. Everyone has a street address. They could have very easily invited every single one of us to come to their meeting, but they were in such a hurry because they wanted to get that meeting ahead of the city council meeting, which was six days after. So, it showed a real disrespect for the people living in the neighborhood that they didn't go over and above to communicate with us. They just wanted their meeting set. But, Mr. Jolly, I wanted to address you specifically. You openly asked them if they would be willing to put all of these promises into writing, and they said, yes, they would. I hope that you're going to stand by that, and whatever this legal stuff is that's going on now, I'm hoping that that becomes public record so that we can see exactly what's being written. They're holding very fast to the idea that they say Livonia needs more affordable housing. Unfortunately, Mr. Donavick has said this is not going to be affordable housing. This is going to be high-end housing with high rents, and I don't know who decides that. So, that's about it.
Thank you, ma'am. I think while we have the next person approaching the podium, you can sit down, ma'am. I don't want to keep you. There are a couple of people have made comments in regards to some meeting. I'll just note for the record, there was no other off-the-books meeting of the city council. People were free to meet as people are free to meet, and so long as there's not more than three members of council, there is no violation of any kind of Open Meetings Act. But there was no official city council meeting other than the ones that have taken place here at City Hall. Next person who would like to speak? Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Good evening. Victoria Koaleski, 29960 Orange Lawn, directly behind the proposed zoning change. Contrary to what we've been told about this zoning change and ensuing outrageous project, this has never been about affordable housing in Livonia. It's always been about the pressure from CEO of Walmart, Doug McMillan, regarding the low performance of the Walmart abutting property and homes on Orange Lawn. This is about providing a customer base for Walmart and all the other businesses this developer built on the Wonderland property, all businesses that he earns income from. Please stop thinking that we don't know what this is about. When Walmart's parking lot is empty at 7:31 in the evening, a week before Thanksgiving, that's a major problem for the developer and the promises he made to Walmart. This whole concept was cemented when the developer's own representative said this project will help the surrounding businesses succeed. Again, I remind all here, this is all about the developer's financial interest and ultimately his pocket. So, just so you all know, I haven't felt safe in my own backyard for at least the past four years. Anytime I go out in my backyard at night now, I carry a body alarm after seeing two men on the berm at 2:30 in the morning when I was putting out kitchen trash. Before I close, I have one more thing to address. When we met last, there was a question regarding the reach-out. I want to make a point about that reach-out. It was not a reach-out to us. It was a reach-out to people who would paint this as a positive project. As I understand, there were a few people there that won't be affected by this, by the zoning change in any way. They don't live close enough to be negatively affected by this, except for traffic issues. If we can't trust the people we've elected to serve the citizens' best interests, who can we trust? Livonia? Family first? Show me with your vote. Thank you, and may God bless us all.
So, we'd like to keep these meetings with proper decorum. You have an opportunity to speak and express your views up here. I don't want any more of that. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Tina Savin, 99710 Porto. I just, I'm not seeing this as something that is for Livonia. It doesn't... We're the citizens back there. We're the families back there. What about us? What about us? We have no walkability. We can't go to that mall and walk it. There's nothing there for us right now. The build in the first place was not all that smart. We have trees that are half-gone. Half the berm, it goes halfway down the block. You've got people walking all the time. I just, I'm just not seeing where this is something that is Livonia, you know? It's not high-end. We're the South End of Livonia. Everybody calls us the ghetto. Well, why would you put a $2,000 apartment there? We're just looking to be happy. We're just trying to keep it for our families. We're hard-working class right there, and we bust our butt to keep our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Cheryl McNall, and I live at 29961 Orange Lawn. My grandmother bought the house back in 1956, yeah, fifty-six, and Livonia, South Livonia is not considered ghetto. It's considered family. It really is. You have the oldest residents, and we're all positive people. We strive to keep our homes up and in great shape, and we know each other. We have our own neighborhood watch, and we respect what you're trying to do for your reasons. We know they're there, but is this really a good idea? My biggest fear is families with children. This is a parking lot. It's really not appropriate. If a child wasn't looking where they were going and did get hit, you guys know you're the ones that put that building there. Those families shouldn't be there. It's just really not safe, and it's not appropriate for the people that have dedicated their lives and are going to continue to live there and die there. That would be me. And I love my home. I take pride in it. My mother took pride in it. My grandmother did. They wouldn't recognize it if they were here with what they did to Wonderland. But it being so close to a shopping center is truly dangerous. There won't be adequate playgrounds, and if they have to go to Devon Air Park, they would either have to open up the wall or walk all the way around onto Middle Belt, which isn't safe. If you just weigh out the good reasons for the bad reasons, there are a whole lot more bad and dangerous risks involved in this decision. And if you could please just take it in your heart to weigh it out carefully. If you were in our shoes, what would you do? Thank you. There are better places. I like the idea of Seven Mile in Farmington. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Good evening, ma'am. Your name for the record, address, too?
My name is Barbara Brown, 29721 Orange Lawn Street, and just down another block from where this building is, or the rezoning would have this building. And I don't have a lot to say, other than, as many of my neighbors wish that this rezoning not pass, that I just want to show my support for them, because I'm totally against that type of building with all, whatever everyone else has said, the downfall of putting up that three-story apartment building. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Your name for the record, address?
Good evening. Cheryl LuLu, 29864 Orange Lawn. And I'm just wondering if anyone has considered our sewer systems over there at all, also, with all of the new building coming up and everything else that's going in in that area? What is it really going to be able to handle? And that's just one of the questions I have. And if anybody can give me a good answer for that, I'd really love to hear it tonight. And I agree with the lady that just spoke. Jeepers, I will never forget the guy that was decapitated there. To this day, I still, every now and then, just think about it, and this is why I'm so against this building, because it's going to be not monitored properly. Nothing over there's been monitored properly, and the Jeepers guy, that's all I think of once that lady spoke about stuff going on when he was decapitated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please?
Yeah, David Stavonovic, 30080 Richland Street. Been here for forty-two years, seeing everything come in, the new stores that you have on Middle Belt, Plymouth Road. Now there's an Amazon being built at Plymouth Road and Middle Belt. You've got a building being built that's at Dunham's. So many more cars. There's too many people in this area. We need to not stop. We need to stop doing these apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing no further comments? No, you've already addressed the council. You can...
I didn't address what you brought up. I'm not...
No, you can't. You can only address the council ones during each. I mean, we have rules for the meetings, so they run along. It's not, the rules apply to everybody.
Except you also violated ours when we were...
Sir?
And you gave Showstack more time.
You have somebody else from the audience who would like to speak appropriately and use the time accordingly. Sir, if you'd like to approach the podium, please do so. Your name and address, please?
Bill Schmidt, 29688 McIntyre. There is not a development similar to this in Section Thirty-Six, Section Thirty-Five, Section Thirty-four, Section Thirty-three, not in Twenty-nine, not in Twenty-eight, not in Twenty-seven. There is nothing like it around, not for miles. This doesn't fit. This doesn't fit. For over two years, we've told you that this doesn't fit. We've said no. It's just a simple word, no. If you have children, you know it's either their first, second, or third word that they learn. No. We mean no. It's not a maybe, not a possibly. We've said no. Over two years, it's been no. No means no. It's not that complicated. All the folks here, the folks we speak to on the street, they all say no. So you're opening up a can of worms, guys. As this goes on, as you continue on with this process, you're going to get more people to trust you less, and that's what you govern with. You govern with trust. We give you our trust, and we trust that you will listen when we say...
We're not going to play these, listen...
No. No. You understand that, Jim?
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further audience communication? There appears to be none. Audience communication is closed on this item. Like I said previously, there is no vote on this tonight. This is a first reading. Any vote will be held up to be considered alongside any potential site plan which is submitted for this project. There is none before council at this time. Moving on to item number eight, Proposed Amendment to Livonia Vision Twenty-One Zoning Ordinance as Amended from the Department of Law, Petition 2021-12-01-11, submitted by Maple Real Estate Group, LLC, to rezone the east fifty-eight feet of 9120 Middle Belt Road, located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between Joy and West Chicago in the southwest quarter of Thirty-Six, Section Thirty-Six, from RUF Rural Urban Farm to C1 Local Business. Counsel, any action?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McIntyre?
I would offer a first read on this.
Yeah, first reading has been offered on item number eight. Any council comments? Any audience comments on that? There's none from either. We will move on to item number nine, Proposed Amendment.
Sorry, I can't hear.
You can't hear me, sir?
No, I can.
Okay. I can't get much closer to the mic here, to be honest with you, but... Item number nine, Proposed Amendment to the Livonia Vision Twenty-One Zoning Ordinance as Amended from the Department of Law for Petition 2022-01-06-01, submitted by the City of Livonia Planning Commission as amended, excuse me, to consider multiple revisions to the Livonia Vision Twenty-One Zoning Ordinance in order to correct certain defects, add and delete provisions, and provide clarifications to others. This is following a public hearing held on Monday, March 21st of 2022. Counsel, any action?
I'll have a first read.
Mr. McCullough has offered a first reading. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number ten, Request to Authorize Appropriation and Expenditure from the Department of Public Works for an Emergency Repair and Restoration of Underground Electrical Services to Fire Station Number One. That's the fire headquarters from budgeted funds. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
I'll ask for an approving support.
Approving motion from Toy, support from Donavick. Anybody on the council have any initial comments? I see none. Well, sir, you're from the administration. You'd like to address this matter?
I have. Thank you. Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works, just standing here, ready to answer questions if there may be any.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Barr?
Mr. Rushlow, I was, as I was reviewing my notes for this tonight, trying to remember what all we had talked about before, and I think I remember what my primary concern was with it. So if this was answered once before, please forgive me, because I think this is what was outstanding and why we had been asking for this, at least from my perspective. The question was just the number, the number of hours that were reported on here by the workers, and I understand that that's man-hours, so if you have multiple workers, that can rack up pretty fast. But even so, I remember we'd done some math last time. I'm not going to quick do it here, but it was, it was pretty extraordinary how high this was, and I think you were going to look into how many workers actually were out there working and for how many days. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. What we did do is speak with the contractor, and Frank Struble from RCI Electric is here to answer some of those questions. Frank's standing right behind me here. He can come up and go into any of those details if you have specific questions on the work that he had done, or how his hours were calculated that, to the such, so.
Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Frank Struble. Our company, RCI Electric, located at 4999 McCarthy Drive, Milford. And maybe it would help if I went through a brief synopsis of the situation. This problem was reported by the fire department in that they had smoke coming out of the ground, okay? I was asked by DPW electrician to come over and visit him on-site, take a look at it, and based on the location of the utility pole and the location of the switchboard in the building, it was determined that it was probably the service entrance wiring from the utility pole burning up underground. We called DTE, actually DPW put in a call to DTE. I went back and met with DTE that evening, along with Chris, the city electrician. We worked with DTE to flip the building over to generator, disconnect power to the wiring underground, take apart the switchboard, check the wiring, and found that indeed one set of wiring, two sets total underground, two separate conduits with two sets of wires, one set of wiring had shorted out, failed underground, and was burning up. So at that point, DTE disconnected the one set at the utility pole. We disconnected in the switchboard so that the building could continue to operate on half of the capacity, 400 amps versus 800 amps, what the service is set up for. Put in work order with DTE, got the service planner out, and we looked at how we were going to handle the repair. The existing conduit and wiring, I think, was original construction. It was the old cloth-jacketed cable and steel pipe. And over the fifty, sixty years it's been in the ground there, the pipe has obviously rusted out, deteriorated to the point where it got into the wiring insulation and caused a problem. The switchboard at that fire headquarters is in the basement, so there's no digging up to get underground, to get up into the bottom of the switchboard, the way the existing are run, so...
Sir, I, first of all, thank you for going into all this detail. I have no doubt your technical expertise.
Too much, too much detail.
And I, no, I appreciate you doing that, but my specific, and if any other council members want to have you continue, they can speak up and ask you to do that, but, but my specific question right now is, how many workers did you have working out there on this?
The, what I was getting at, long story short, is that we had to dig from the utility pole all the way around, over to the building, along the back of the building, and then through the basement wall. So we're talking about 150 foot of trench, three foot deep, two foot wide. We had anywhere from two to six people on-site over a thirty, forty-five day period.
Okay. That actually, I ran some numbers here. You saying that, that checks out for me. I'm good.
Yeah, and we ended up having to use some subcontractors also because of the emergency nature, getting into sawcut. We had to remove quite a bit of concrete at the back of the building.
That alleviates my concern, and I do appreciate you coming to explain that tonight. Thank you.
Very good.
Anybody else from the council?
I have a question for Mr. Rushlow. When repairs like these are going on, who's responsible, Jacob over at DPW, for monitoring the work? And how often is the work monitored? Is there daily checkpoints?
Right, so in this type of project, the way it was performed was done as basically a quoted project. So when we met with Frank originally, and he can go into more detail on it, how all that was set up, it was done as a quoted project where he basically gave us a final cost of what it was going to take before he started doing the work, based on what he saw in the estimates and the meetings with DTE and our electrical team and all that. So once he started doing that work, our inspections out there and our detailing of the work done and the man-hour use and equipment was minimal. We were only checking for the work being done properly and meeting the specifications through both the building department and our team on the electrical side. So we were not out there tracking hours or equipment. It was really just the quality of work, making sure it was done to the correct standards.
And so, may I continue, Mr. Chair? So when did we get the, when did we get the project cost and the quote from RCI?
Oh, that was, I think I have it here.
So the fire was what date, or the failure of the underground equipment was?
So it was in, I believe the fire was in August. The, I have the estimate here from RCI was September 1st.
And then when did the work commence?
Frank, do you know when the date you guys started working?
We started working pretty much immediately upon approval of the quote. We were actually working before approval of the quote in doing the research with DTE and, you know, going out, getting the building operating on one set of conductors, that type of thing. So at that point, we were able to look at it a little bit, try and figure out what we were going to need to do, and put together a quote at that point. So I had an August 30th, yeah, so September 1st date, and the work was completed the end of September, DTE changeover September 30th. That was one thing I meant to mention, is the bulk of the work we do with the city, under the city maintenance contract, is time and materials. So we keep time sheets that are reviewed and, you know, monitored from that standpoint. In this particular case, a quote was required, so we put together the numbers of what we thought it was going to take to do the job, all things quoted, you know, where it can be ups and downs. We had some downs on this. We had to use some subcontractors, and we had some things that went a little easier. So on a quote, this is the number you get, right? So it's, we, it could be a winner or a loser. So, but at any rate, we don't keep track of...
And I don't, I don't have, I don't have any concern with the work that you've done or how you documented it. My concern is that this was in September, and it took until November 3rd, Jacob, for council to get any communication on this and request for money. So sixty days.
Corrective.
From the time you had a quote until the time this came before council for $80,000.
Right, and, excuse me, the mic got a little loud. And the way we typically do these in operations through emergency repairs, the work is done prior to coming before council to get then the approval for paid it.
I understand that.
So the, and I do have a copy of the invoice date. It was October 13th, and we got that ready to be placed.
But you knew, you knew at the beginning of September what the cost was going to be, and none of this got communicated toward, to council until November?
Yes, that's correct. Once the work was completed, yes, correct.
And I think that's my concern, is we understand emergency expenditures, but I don't think there's anything in our process or our protocol that would suggest it wasn't appropriate to notify council of this project and of the expense, because that's a lot, as you know. And I think after hearing this, indicating from my colleague, Mr. Barr, and as I just said, I don't have any concern now with the, with the cost relative to the work that was done, but that's a long time for council not to be aware of a large emergency expenditure. So thank you, and thanks for the preparation, and thanks for having RCI here tonight.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm all done.
Anybody else from the council? I see none. Anybody from the audience who'd like to address this matter? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item 10 is approved. We'll move on to item number 11, a request to adopt a resolution proclaiming Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Livonia. This is from Bill Craig and the Livonia Tree City Committee. This is from Bill Craig and the Livonia Tree City Committee and Douglas Moore, Assistant Director of Public Works. This event will be celebrated at 2:30 PM at Coolidge Elementary at 30500 Curtis Street. Council, any motions?
All for an approving support.
Approving motion from McCullough, support from Donavick. I think he beat you out there, Laura, you gotta-
Okay, he's always doing that to me, Darnett.
Does anybody on the council want to address this matter? Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, so this, you know, at 2:30, Coolidge is the, is going to be the school, if you're looking for a great time, they're going to put on a presentation, I think the public is invited, there'll be, weather-dependent, there'll be a tree planting ceremony, if not, there would be some kind of an event for a weather delay indoors. Great event, we've been Tree City USA now for another year and looking forward to celebrating this in person.
Thank you very much. Any audience communication? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on 11?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, 11 passes and April 29th will be Arbor Day in the City of Livonia. Thank you very much. That concludes our scheduled agenda for this evening, I'll go back to council communication. Council, is there anything anybody would like to say?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
Just real quick, I forgot to do this in the beginning, but, and those of you that are a little bit younger than I am, not too many of you, but I just want to give a shout out that Senator Joanne Emmons, who was very instrumental in moving this state forward for many, many years, passed away last week and her funeral will be held this Friday in Big Rapids. I know that Governor Engler and a lot of other dignitaries from the state will be there. She just had great influence on this state and I think it's worth mentioning on a local level because that's where she started out, to, to give her just a shout-out in that regard. We, we tend to need to remember our elected leaders, whether they're local or whether they're through the country or whatever, people that do good things and make our lives better and she certainly was one of those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, madam. Anybody else from the council? Any audience communication to close out the meeting? There is none, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So, Barr?
Motion by McIntyre, support by McCullough. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote, please?
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
President, Vice President Toy?
I said aye.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
President Jolly?
Aye, the, or the meeting is adjourned, we will convene for the study meeting at 8:05.
8:05. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm ready for the votes. Thank you.